I will call to order the October 20, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. And Vice Chair Elmore, could you lead us off?
(Inaudible) States of America and Tudor Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff, roll call.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
Thank you. Move on to public comments. This is the time that we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda this evening and are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. Do we have any comments this evening from the public? Seeing none, we will move on to requests for continuances. Staff, are there any requests?
Chair Climen, there are no requests for continuances.
Thank you. Moving on to consent items. Item number one, our minutes of October 6, 2022 meeting. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to comment on our October 6 meeting? Seeing none, I will call for a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion and add Mr. Mosher's edits.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
The motion carries 6-0 with Vice Chair Elmore Epstein.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearing items. Item number two, Alchemy 43 Med Spa, PA 2022-0156. Site location, 906 Avocado Avenue. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Chair Climen. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jocelyn Perez and I'm with the Planning Division. The first public hearing item for your consideration is a conditional use permit to operate a med spa. The subject property is located at 906 Avocado Avenue. The subject property is located at 906 Avocado Avenue. It's within an existing shopping center at the intersection of Avocado and Coast Drive. The surrounding land uses are primarily commercial with residential located beyond MacArthur and to the south of the project site in Cronodelmar. This is a site plan of the Cronodelmar Shopping Center where the med spa is proposed for. You'll see up in the corner in that pink section, that is the suite that the med spa is proposed in. Notable tenants within the Cronodelmar Shopping Center include Bristol Farms, Gulfstream Restaurant, Jacksa Surfing Apparel and such. The suites orient toward a shared parking area. And in the lower right-hand corner, you can see the suite that the med spa will move into that is currently occupied by Oh My Soul Shoe Store. The applicant is proposing to operate an approximately 1,100 square foot medical office, med spa. And that asks the question, what is a med spa? A med spa features different treatments ranging from facials up to injectable fillers, microneedling, wellness shots. It samples some of the operational characteristics that are common to a personal service like a beauty salon. There's also products available for retail. But there is a medical doctor on site to supervise those procedures that are a little bit, they're more consistent with medical. The hours of operation are from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. And the applicant anticipates 12 patients per day with the potential for walk-in if staff allows. For you now, I have a floor plan. In this pink area is the small retail area, the reception and the waiting room. There's a consultation room, two treatment rooms. In that green shaded area are areas accessed by staff. There's a wellness and recovery room and a bathroom. The area that doesn't have any color, that's a corridor between the waiting room and the wellness room. So the subject property is located within the planned community Newport Village, so PC 27. PC 27 has a list of uses that are permitted by right. Medical office is not a use that's permitted by right. However, there's this subsequent section that lists uses that are allowed subject to obtaining a use permit. And what I've highlighted there is the clause that allows a medical office if that is a use that's listed in that table referenced there. And that table is from a previous version of the zoning code that is, which is why an RSC district may not seem familiar. That was the commercial district prior to the 2010 zoning code update. Now that it's been established that a conditional use permit is required, staff is required to analyze the project and determine whether the findings to recommend approval can be made. Some of those findings include determining whether this use is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning district and compatible with the surrounding uses. In both cases, staff was able to make that determination. Another thing that's considered is parking demand. This site is interesting, and PC 27 is interesting in the sense that it doesn't have different parking rates for different uses. All of the businesses within the Cronodelmar Shopping Center have that same parking rate. So since this project doesn't include an addition, there's no increase in parking. And also, the project characteristics of a med spa, as I mentioned earlier, are somewhat similar to retail and personal services, like a beauty salon. There are conditions of approval in the draft resolution to help ensure that this business doesn't morph into anything that is not being considered today. For example, condition of approval number seven requires if the applicant does change their business model in the future, they'll need to come back to the Planning Division for review of those changes. And if it's determined that those changes aren't in substantial conformance with this use permit, they'll need to process either an amendment or a new use permit. It's also notable that there are no massage services as part of this business, and that's not included in this use permit. Also, condition number 25, there are other departments that reviewed the project and have a similar condition that if there are substantial changes to what's being reviewed today, they need to come back and have those changes reviewed. Staff has two revisions, two conditions of approval. I won't read through the changes word by word, but condition of approval number seven has been updated to explicitly prohibit the massage element, which I'd like to mention, that's not a part of their project description. This is just going above and beyond, making it very evident that massage is not allowed as part of this use permit. And then there's a change to condition of approval number eight. Condition of approval number eight is in reference to the traffic fair share fees that are assessed when a use changes to a use with a higher trip generation. Originally, the text had language that was overly specific, citing retail to medical office. That's something that's ultimately assessed at plan check time. So rewriting this condition to remove that specific language isn't saying that there isn't a fee due, or there is, but it allows the applicant to sort that out at plan check time where it's more appropriate. With that, staff recommends conducting the public hearing, finding this project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and approving the project by adopting the draft resolution with those edits. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and the applicant does have a short PowerPoint to present to you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff, from Commissioners? Okay, we will do ex parte communications, starting at the end.
I had none.
None.
None for me.
None.
None for me.
None.
And none for me. I'll open the public hearing, and we'll hear from our applicant.
I am Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning, representing Alchemy 43 in this use permit application tonight. I want to thank Jocelyn Perez for working on this project with us and getting us to the commission tonight. We appreciate all of her hard work. So again, I have a very, very simple PowerPoint for you tonight. The project site is located in Cronodelmar Plaza, not too far from where we're sitting Alchemy 43 is an aesthetics bar specializing in cosmetic microtreatments. That is, microtreatments, there we go, I can say it. They offer skincare treatments and retail products. They expect six to 12 clients per day, open from roughly 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. No massage use is our proposed. The conditional use permit, the use is consistent with the Newport Village Plan Community text and the general plan. There is no change in area, that is, the square footage is not changing, and there's no change to the parking rate required. We have reviewed the staff report. We have reviewed the conditions as updated, are in full agreement with those conditions, and we request that the commission approve the use permit tonight. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from Commissioners? I have a couple. You're not off the hook just yet. My first question is, why this shopping center for this type of use?
Do you mean, why did the right company intend to lease to the specific client? Or why is it a good fit for this particular shopping center?
Yes, the latter, thank you.
I think that these types of uses are becoming really popular in our communities. And they are, you know, they offer both drop-in and appointment services, similar to a nail salon, a hair salon. And so these types of personal services uses really are appropriate in neighborhood shopping centers that have, you know, a fair amount of community traffic.
Okay. And I had a question about medical waste. Is there a plan for proper disposal? I mean, in a medical office, it seems like that would be simplified, but in a place...
Absolutely. So the medical office always has a licensed professional there at all times, such as a nurse or a nurse practitioner. All of the staff is trained in, you know, Sharp's disposal, all of those things. So this is a highly regulated use with the state, and so all of the state health requirements will be followed.
Okay, so there's no need to add a condition related to that? That's already regulated, already taken care of?
Yes.
My final question is about employee parking. I know that peak times, parking in that shopping center can get a little crazy, especially around lunch. You know, Gulfstream, there's always high demand, and as you mentioned, there's a nail salon in there, people coming and going. I would think people wanting to go to this particular business would also want to be parked really close, so that they can just kind of, you know, get in their car quickly.
I was over there this afternoon, and I was able to park directly in front, and there were several parking spaces right in front. I know that the landlord is very successful in working with their tenants to allocate where employees should be parking, to make sure that the general public has lots of available parking.
Great. Thank you. Are there any new questions after? No. Okay, we'll open it up to the public for comments. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? I'm sorry, Shawna, I meant to ask you if you agree with the conditions.
Yes, Chair Climen, we agree with all of the conditions as amended.
No discussion? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I can make one. I'll adopt, make a motion to adopt resolution PC 2022-024 with the two changes on conditions number seven and eight, the two revisions provided by staff.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to item number three, nonconforming code and LCP amendments, PA 2022-076. I will need to recuse myself due to the location of my personal residence, and I believe there are other Commissioners who need to recuse themselves as well.
Same. Yes, I need to recuse myself. There are four properties in my 500-foot zone. It doesn't affect my property, but neighbors within.
As a vice chair, I'll be running this item number three. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Sure, thank you, Vice Chair Elmore. I want to make a couple of prefatory remarks, and I'm going to turn it over to Jocelyn Perez for the presentation. I kind of want to characterize this as a cleanup item. We are amending our nonconforming privileges of our code to reinstate some privileges that used to be there. That's the second part of the ordinance. Additionally, we're clarifying the language that's there and how it affects residential properties. We need to do this, especially in the light of the Housing Crisis Act, where, you know, we can't be reducing density anymore, and our code is a little unclear as to what you can do with a nonconforming residential property. So this will provide that clarification. So with that, I'll go ahead and have Jocelyn get into the details. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening again. My name is Jocelyn, I'm with staff. And the next item for your consideration is the nonconforming code and LCP amendment. This amendment includes amendments to both Title 20 and Title 21. During my presentation, I will be referring to it as the code amendment. This was initiated by City Council earlier this year, and we are returning with the proposed I've split the code amendment into two different parts. Part one is nonconforming residential density, or properties that are considered nonconforming uses because they have more units than currently allowed by their zoning district. So a little bit of background, there are properties throughout the city, primarily in the older neighborhoods, such as West Newport, the Peninsula, Cronodelmar, where they're developed with triplexes and quadplexes. These neighborhoods have since been downzoned to R2 or R1. And as Jim mentioned earlier, the code has provisions for what can be done to a nonconforming use, as in the code states that projects are allowed that reduce the number of dwelling units to a compliant density. However, the code is silent on what other allowances are available to property owners. While this is already challenging to have the code be silent on something, it became more of an issue after the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. As mentioned, it takes away cities' ability to approve projects that reduce the total number of dwelling units. So that's the problem. The proposed solution is to amend the code to treat these nonconforming uses the same way we treat nonconforming structures. So modifications and alterations will be allowed to these nonconforming properties per the restrictions in the nonconforming structures chapter. Some obvious benefits of updating the code to provide clarity, this allows property owners to reinvest in their triplexes and quadplexes, and extend the practical life of the dwelling units, which preserves the city's existing housing stock. And generally, when you're able to reinvest in your property, it makes the neighborhood look nice and is a benefit to the people living within the property, too. So this, this is a nonconforming triplex in Cronodelmar. With this proposed code amendment, property owners will be able to perform structural alterations, nonstructural alterations, maintenance and repairs, and additions, subject to the section, subject to them having compliant parking as well. There is a subsequent section that if a triplex or a property doesn't have compliant parking, their additions will be limited to 10%. So you won't see this necessarily turn into a giant structure. The second part of the code amendment is a clarification to side setbacks. Little background here, prior to the 2010 Comprehensive Zoning Code update, there was a zoning district known as the B overlay. The B overlay existed from the early 1950s all the way to that zoning code update. Properties that were originally developed under the jurisdiction of the county, for whatever reason, they were built with a smaller setback than what the B overlay required. When these properties were later annexed by the city, they became nonconforming overnight because they didn't, they weren't built to the side setback that the B overlay required. This was so common throughout the city that the city council back in the 60s amended the code to allow additions in line with the principal structure. And so when the city updated the zoning code in 2010, this provision was accidentally left out. Without this provision, property owners have to jog in their proposed additions to the current setback, and it creates inconvenient floor plans, adds costs to the construction project, and is just generally not helpful. This is a map of the former B overlay properties and what those properties became during the zoning code update. So they were rewritten to be the R16, the R17200, the R110, the R26000, and RM6000. I've highlighted here the coastal zone boundaries because it's notable that this code amendment would not become immediately effective in the coastal zone, because any changes to Title 21 have to go to the Coastal Commission for their review and approval. So properties outside of the coastal zone, if this amendment is approved, would be allowed to take advantage of the code amendment as soon as it's adopted. So a little bit more about the proposed code amendment, what we're doing is reinstating that omitted provision. So the graphic to the right demonstrates a property that's built to that reduced five-foot setback. For example, if this was a property in the R16000 zoning district, that required setback, side setback is six feet, but this code provision would allow the area of addition to be in line with the principal structure. Equally important, this code amendment makes these properties no longer nonconforming, so they're not limited to the rules and regulations of the nonconforming structures section of the code. There are a few limitations I'd like to point out. This code amendment only applies to the principal structure. So if you have a detached garage out in the back of your lot, maybe it's built about two feet off the property line, you can't use that as your, your existing setback. It only applies to your, to your house. If a property owner wishes to tear down their house and scrape the lot, they can't build back to that five-foot setback. They're going to have to comply with the development standards that are in effect today. Also, if there's ever a conflict between a building code required setback and a planning setback, or the existing setback of the house, the building code will prevail. With that, staff recommends conducting a public hearing, finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and adopting both resolutions. Next steps are City Council, which is tentatively scheduled on November 15, and as I mentioned earlier, submitting that Title 21 amendment to the California Coastal Commission for their consideration. That concludes my presentation. Thank you. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Jocelyn. Very well done. Back to the Commissioners, any questions of staff?
Are there any other areas of the city that would, besides these B areas, it's only where it applies to, correct?
Only the former B overlay properties.
All right, Commissioners, any ex parte communications? I'll start down there.
None.
None for me.
None.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Please state your name for the record, and your time limit will be three minutes.
Vice Chair Elmore and members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I had to comment on both of the parts of this two-part proposal. The first part regarding properties that are nonconforming because they have too many units for the current zoning. My comment on that is, we heard that this proposal is being made to conform, at least in part, with the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, which is a temporary bill that I believe remains effective through 2030. And I would note on your agenda, item number five, you're going to be appointing a committee that's going to be reviewing the existing municipal code and council policies. And one of its purposes is to point out things in the code that could have a sunset provision in them. So if this is to comply with a temporary state mandate, would this not be a prime candidate for something that should have a sunset clause in it? That's my comment on part one. Part two, about the side setback footnote that was inadvertently left out in 2010, I found one thing particularly confusing. The agenda announcement and the first paragraph summary in the staff report says that this is supposed to address 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 different zoning districts, one of them being one called And when I look at the actual proposal, which is on page handwritten number 17, the footnote is not being added to the R1-7200, which sounds like that is the carryover from the B1 former district. And also on handwritten page 19, the provision at the top of that lists the number of districts. It does not list the 7200 district. I don't know if that's inadvertent or for some particular purpose, but the proposal doesn't seem to be doing what the agenda announcement said it would. And then, final comment on this is, I think it's clear from the amendment that people can use an existing substandard setback and continue to use that only if it was legal at the time that the building was constructed. But Jocelyn, both in the staff report and in her oral presentation, said there seems, it keeps saying, for whatever reason, we don't know, the setback is smaller. For those that are in areas where it was constructed with city jurisdiction, I think we know what the setback rules were then. And some of these areas that were originally county areas, including the 7,000 something thing, do we know what was legal in the county if something was built in 1951 or 1965 even? Or how are we going to verify that it actually was legal at the time and not something that was actually nonconforming in the county, which I don't think we would want to perpetuate? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience want to speak? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Staff, do you, with the two comments there, the sunset clause and the side setback for the R17000, just any response from your end?
Yes, that was something we considered, that SB 330 sunsets in 2030. However, it's not clear whether that will be extended. Its future is a little uncertain, and it doesn't quite make sense to wait until then to clean up and clarify the code that property owners are allowed to do these modifications. That's the first question there, and Mr. Mosher asked about the 7200 district. Staff research didn't identify any properties that were affected by this update, but it's something that we can revisit if we want to add the footnote to the table for the 7200 district.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission for any conversation or a motion. Okay? A motion by anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve nonconforming code and LCP amendments, agenda items. Agenda MPa 2022-076 as drafted.
Give a second.
A second.
Call for a vote?
The motion carries unanimously. Hope you missed us. Moving on to item number four, under our study sessions. This is our first study session this evening for nonresidential parking code update, PA 2021-104. Site location is citywide. Staff, please proceed.
Good evening, Chair Kleiman. Planning Commissioners Ben Zadiba. I'll give you a brief presentation and happy to hear your discussion and entertain any questions you may have about potential code updates related to parking requirements. So giving you a brief, sorry, brief background. January 26, 2021, we took this to study session with council. They were interested in having staff study restaurant parking, reviewing commercial parking for best practices, and then looking to explore incentives for ride share, such as Uber and Lyft, or Grubhub and meal delivery services, and alternative modes of transit like bicycles. It was predominantly focused on new and emerging trends in transportation, and I think a lot of that was amplified by the COVID-19 pandemic. We came back to council again November 30th of last year and shared some of the initial findings that came about from staff and the city's consultant Nelson Nygaard. City council was generally supportive of all of the recommendations that you are about to hear about. I'll give you some considerations that they talked about during the study session at that time and things that you can consider, obviously focusing comments on. You can comment on whatever you like, but there are considerations that council specifically honed in on with their, with the presentation that was made at that time. Also notable, they initiated code amendments to Title 21 and Title 20 during that regular session. The last date on here is a community workshop that was held September 7th, so last month. Staff shared the recommendations, discussed questions, and received feedback from the community. So diving right into the recommendations, and these will all be recapped at the end for you, by the way. So the first recommendation from Nelson Nygaard focuses around bicycle-based reductions. And really, that is intended to incentivize the use of bicycles and the accommodations for bicycles on commercial properties. And one thing, just to be clear, this only, this entire presentation and the entire consideration is only for commercial and nonresidential parking. Residential parking is not part of this particular scope. So the recommendation is to look at reducing one space for every three bicycle parking spaces provided. And the note is that it's above any minimum requirement. So if there's a building code requirement to include bicycle parking onsite, the inherent parking that's required by the code is not counted towards this benefit or reduction. So anything above and beyond is what we're really looking at here. And that goes up to a maximum reduction of 5% of the total requirement for that site. Another consideration that is recommended is to allow an additional 5% reduction with onsite facilities, like lockers and showers for employees. In the staff report for this item, you'll also notice that there's a consideration for facilities that are proximate to the site it's intended to use. So I think the amount is an eighth mile, within an eighth mile of the site. Nelson Nygaard is also recommending that if those facilities are available at no cost to the employees, that site could look at entertaining, using that towards that reduction. Moving into shared mobility-based reductions, again, that's related to Uber, Lyft, meal delivery services such as Grubhub. And for this, the first bullet point talks to office uses specifically. Another thing, the obvious older shared method of travel, carpooling. Carpool spaces are generally required for larger projects. So this talks to requiring them above and beyond again. And looking at one space designated for carpool equating to up to three parking spaces for, again, an office use only, up to a maximum reduction of 5% of the total requirement. In addition, kind of a separate ride share or shared mobility is the use of Uber, Lyft, Grubhub, again, as I mentioned. And that allows for up to a 10% reduction when you have, let's say, a shopping center. That's kind of the exemplary case here. Say an Irvine Company shopping center, you've got a length of curb that's designated for loading and unloading, and you have at least 20 feet. Then that can reduce the parking, as well as a single signed parking space. It's notable that this, again, pertains only to private curb space and not to public curb space at this time. The third recommendation relates to parking requirements in the code. So again, as part of the study, Nelson Nygaard was tasked with looking at best practices and looking at nationwide standards. And when it comes to the city's parking requirements for medical and general business professional office, most cities in our region and most cities nationwide have equivalent parking standards for medical and basic office. So the recommendation from Nelson Nygaard is to reduce our medical and dental office parking requirement from one per 200 square feet of gross floor area to be commensurate with the general business office requirement of one per every 250 square feet of net floor area. I'll also note here that although the parking requirements would remain the same, you learned about fair, not learned, but you heard about fair share traffic fees in Jocelyn's item earlier, those would still apply. Just because the parking requirements are the same does not exempt them from paying a development impact fees for more intense use based on trips. Recommendation number four pertains to restaurant parking ratios. The first row that you see there relates to the current code requirement, which is rather convoluted. I know a lot of you have dealt with that before in prior items. We have a range of one parking space for every 30 to 50 square feet of net public area or customer area. And it's a little subjective as to how that is identified. There are several criteria, but ultimately, staff makes a recommendation based on those criteria. The average, as can be seen, between 30 and 50 is 40, and that's usually what it ends up being. So the recommendation is to come in line with our regional peers and best practices by making it a blanket, one space for every 100 square feet of gross floor area, and that would include outdoor dining areas. So one thing to distinguish here is the 30 to 50 square feet is only accounting for the net public area or dining area, whereas the one per 100 recommendation also accounts for back of house. And again, that's gross floor area. Recommendation number five is related to fast casual. And this is something that actually was honed in on by city council when this was a study session in November, looking at a potential different use from takeout service limited. And it was coined as fast casual. So Nelson Nygaard looked throughout the region and also nationwide to try to find best practices. And that's, that's the attachment that's attached to the study session report. You'll see that there are several peer cities, such as Huntington Beach, Laguna Beach listed. And many of them have similar categories, but no one really has something that's great for fast casual. So the recommendation was to take our existing land use and make it simple. The current code requires, or limits, rather, up to a maximum of six seats for a takeout service limited establishment. Again, the intention there is a quick turnover, and the same goes for fast casual. When you look at fast casual, the thought is like a Chipotle or a Jersey Mike, something that's very quick turnover, off-site consumption primarily. And notably, there's no alcohol service either. So I know some Chipotles have alcohol, but in this case, our takeout service limited category would still prohibit alcohol sales, which again prevents people from lingering and ordering drinks and really is conducive to quicker turnover. So again, maximum of 20 seats. And this is not something that has been windowed with city council, the 20 seats. So obviously, if there were a desire to reduce that as a recommendation, it's totally at your discretion. Number six, this is seen as a best practice, and that is an administrative parking waiver by the director, and it's the community development director. And in this case, the administrative waiver would be up to 20% of the total required nonresidential parking. And to clarify and to reiterate, waivers above that 20% will still require a conditional use permit that would come before you for review. Much like the conditional use permit waiver, the administrative waiver would also require a professionally-prepared parking demand and supply analysis that would be reviewed by the city traffic engineer. So just because it's administrative waiver doesn't mean that it's a magic wand. It still requires the substantiating evidence to demonstrate that the proposed waiver is acceptable and will not result in a detriment to the surrounding neighborhood. Lastly, when you look at these reductions, the question can be, well, what if they select to do many of them? The recommendation from Nelson Nygaard is to cap any sort of combination at 20% for administrative reductions. And then after 20%, there would be likely additional discretionary view that would be warranted to look at potential impacts. So again, up to 20% administrative, and then anything beyond 20% would be discretionary. Just some considerations to note that are important. So much like the prior item you had, areas in the coastal zone would take a little longer to implement due to the coastal commission's oversight and need for them to approve any amendments to our local coastal implementation plan. And also, the city has many planned communities, as you know, that have their own distinctive parking requirements. And there may be an opportunity to do a blanket override of all those requirements. However, staff is not sure at this time that that is feasible. So we may have to look at individually amending each of those planned community texts to take advantage of the actual parking requirements you see here. In red, I did note that the bicycle, ride share, delivery, all of the other provisions that would not be explicitly listed in a planned community document could apply immediately once effective. So as far as next steps, looking at a public hearing in the first quarter of 2023, and then moving into phase two thereafter, which did not touch on earlier, but when we brought this to city council in November, there was a discussion on phased approach. And looking at phase two would dive into in-lu parking fee study programs, which the city has but does not actively pursue. Reason being is there are, there's not a lot of opportunity to build parking structures citywide. So part of the direction from council is to get creative with that fund as far as what can be done with an in-lu parking fee and what can be done to creatively manage our curbsides or things that can have a real benefit and not just sit and wait for a parking structure to come online. They also talk about parking management districts, so that's more area-based. Right now, I put an example as Baboa Village. We do have one in the zoning code right now for Baboa Village that requires no new additional parking for changes of use in certain circumstances. And that's currently being pursued through the Coastal Commission for implementation. And lastly, looking at curbside management, so that deals with the public curbside, red curbs, and how we can better utilize those, as well as managing through technology and applications. But this is our last slide. This is really a recap of every recommendation that we have from Nelson Nygaard. I tried my best to summarize in the jogger memory as to what they may be, but I'm happy to go back to another slide. And this is the slide I'll leave up. I'm happy to answer any questions or discuss further. Unfortunately, Nelson Nygaard cannot have a representative here this evening. So if there's any extremely technical questions, I may have to delay the answer on that to a further subsequent meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for the thorough presentation and all the work you've done on this item. I think we can all agree this is long overdue, and I know staff's been working on it for a very long time. Are there any questions from commissioners for staff?
Commissioner Koster, mayor?
I have a question on recommendation number six. I'm just curious if you could give me some examples of some waivers that the city has looked at in the past?
Sure. Just to give you an example, let's see. Most of the properties in the city don't have onsite parking that are older restaurant properties, let's say. I'll give you an example, like the restaurants that are in McFadden Square. They don't have their own onsite parking. They rely on city public parking as a way of providing a parking supply in the area. For modifications to those restaurants where you've expanded floor area or added seats or done other operational changes, we've had to waive parking in those cases. Now, so we caveat that with the fact that if you have a restaurant that has, let's say, alcohol, and they want to expand, then that's going to require a use permit amendment anyway. So it's not just going to be an administrative waiver at that point in time. It's, it's challenging to answer that question, I guess, appropriately.
Would those decisions be appealable to planning commission?
Yes, yes, there would be an appeal process, and everything would be posted in a staff action report.
Yeah, I guess, sorry, just to ask one more question there. I guess I'm just curious if, I understand the example about McFadden Square and the use of public parking there. Let's say there were a restaurant in just your typical retail center that has parking, and they wanted to expand, like with an outdoor patio. Would that be an example of you granting them a waiver on parking if they were going to be increasing? Does that square footage count towards parking?
Yes, it would, and in that case, you would require a use permit amendment as well. So it would still be coming before a zoning administrator or planning commission. And just one clarification, I could have answered better, and I'm sorry for that. The McFadden Square example, let's just say, I've worked personally on Stag Bar. There have been waivers in the past on that restaurant and bar. If we've already waived 20% of a use as parking, and again, restaurants and bars are a bad example because they require use permit anyway, but if there were already a waiver for a property, it doesn't give the director the authority to waive beyond an additional 20%. If there's already been a waiver in place, then that's not even in play.
Thank you. Other commissioners?
Yeah, I just had some other questions. There wasn't really anything in the report discussing, you know, employee parking spillover into residential. You said that we're not discussing residential, but there is that spillover. I could use, you know, Finley Track, I could use Tustin Riverside, I could use CDM, where people park in the residential neighborhoods to go into those, you know, to the areas. So, you know, what, what are we doing, you know, to kind of look into that? Is there, is that going to be phase two, or?
Yeah, so the intent of the phase one changes is to incentivize alternative modes of transit. So again, you've got ride share incentives as well as bicycle incentives to hopefully add those provisions to properties and allow for alternative modes of travel for employees and patrons alike. As touched upon in phase two, there will be specific areas that'll be dived into, such as Kornalmar or McFadden Square. Well, we'll look at considering establishing a parking management district, and therein may be a more in-depth study of those existing supplies and how it's used and how it could be used better. I do know that, I should have mentioned that, we have another consultant, Walker, who has prepared parking studies in the past for areas like Kornalmar and Baboa Island. And we'll be using them to look at those specific areas as to how that supply could be better used. Again, I would also mention that the restaurant change now includes the back of house, so it's not going to completely reduce requirements. It will still consider the entire size of the restaurant.
Yeah, I think that's a pretty big concern by a lot of folks is just the parking of the restaurant staff or staff, and then parking residential, and then walking. It happens a lot on Tustin and Riverside, you know, to a lot of the restaurants there that just don't have the parking. So I think that's at least important to pay attention to. On the medical dental, does that change, include surgical? Is there a different rate that surgical is under when it comes to medical dental? Is that going to include that?
Outpatient surgery is currently one per 250, so there'd be no consideration in changing that. It would stay the same.
Okay, okay. And then the other, just that discussion on the takeout service slash fast casual discussion on alcohol. So how does that kind of go into the weighing in on that? Because I, I know several restaurants that are primarily, you know, out the door. Because I know several restaurants that are primarily, you know, out the door to goes, but they do have, you know, an element that allows for, you know, that, like you said, the Chipotles. And there's a handful of restaurants that I can think of that have that. How is that, is there, is there another way around that to allow for, you know, the small beer wine sales that could keep everything in play? Or is that really a strong consideration as to why you changed it into that, in that format?
So the current takeout service limited land use prohibits the sale of alcohol by definition. And that was something that staff was not looking at changing, again, because adding the sale of alcohol does encourage more, a lengthier stay. You might have multiple drinks, or you might stay onsite longer consuming the beverage. Whereas precluding alcohol sales really turns it into quick service, quick turnover. The way that it's worded in the Nelson Nygaard study that I like is that more cars and less parking spaces, so just, again, more turnover in the same amount of parking spaces encouraged through operating characteristics for fast casual and takeout service limited that include things like no table service, and this is all again in the definition, no table service, you're ordering from a single point of sale and going, grabbing your food, going to sit down at a table, consuming there or taking it off-site. And by definition, again, no alcohol, and that's not something that staff was looking at considering changing at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Harris?
I'm pretty supportive of all these. I think they're pretty good ideas. I think they solve some problems, especially, well, it has to go through coastal, but coastal zones and village. One question I had was on existing uses right now, they could obviously apply for these changes if they wanted, or, you know, create more seats or, you know, more usable space in there, I'm assuming.
That's correct. And they would just be subject to the current code provisions.
Number five, I think that's pretty aggressive. I would possibly be in favor of scaling that back slightly, but besides, kind of splitting hairs. But besides that, I think these are pretty good solutions, or at least looking forward to how things are changing.
So on to number three, or let me see here. Yeah, medical dental. It says it's a recommendation from the guide, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the guidebook. I'm not familiar with that. Is that a regional group? Is that a national group? What's, how come we're, how come we're supporting their recommendation?
I may be speaking out of turn here, because we have an expert on the, on the table here. But the ITE is the go-to manual. It's the best practice industry-wide for setting trip rates, and I believe they also deal with parking. Tony may jump in if I'm wrong with that.
It is a national manual, so they look at parking averages and rates across the country.
Yeah, just because it's national, I mean, parking is going to be different in Los Angeles, New York, San Francisco, as it is going to be in Newport Beach.
Right, right. It's, it's kind of a secondary document that we look at here, that planning looks at as well, kind of a comparison back to our own parking code. So it's, it's a good check, if you will, on what our own parking code requirements are.
Yeah. Okay. I just, you know, for the medical office component of it, I feel that the parking typically is more highly impacted, and then to reduce that is just going to cause more congestion. I feel like office is kind of the exact opposite. So I'm just curious if they, if we can maybe take a deeper look as to how that recommendation would kind of hone in on somewhere like Newport Beach versus just a national average. Maybe a little deeper dive on that?
Noted. Thank you.
Secretary Rosin?
So this is a study session, and are we going to talk about each one of these? I'm looking for what's the format. Should I go through the notes and walk through it, or what's the, how are we going to handle that?
We want to hear your feedback. That's what the session is for.
Just checking. In regard to the building for the office versus medical, it seems to me that there was a parking study that was done, an example is right across the street on Avocado, and wasn't that building that had a, you know, they weren't able to meet the requirements for, and if we used this new code based on the traffic analysis that they provided, it would have been compliant. So, I don't know, it seems like that particular provision, I think that was item three, sort of made sense to me, if I recall that correctly. And I completely went out of order. So I'm going to try this. The parking provision on recommendation one for adding bicycle parking, that seemed reasonable for part A, with one space with up to 5%. But, and I think staff, you hit the nail on the head here on the part B portion, it's just not translatable in terms of bicycles and, you know, it's really depends on the location. So an office versus McFadden Square, and who's going to really use a bicycle in those conditions? We would love to see that. Probably didn't make much sense. On recommendation number two, let's see here, this is the one regarding ride-share, and it seemed to me that this one made, it seemed like the first portion of it made sense on part A. Part B, however, had something, I had a note here about ride-share. It made sense for food establishments, but didn't seem like it was appropriate for office. I feel like I need to go back and read them all again. Sorry about that. Recommendation three was office medical, I think we just brought that one up. Recommendation four, this was the relationship between a regular restaurant and the fast casual. So is that correct, or?
Takeout service limited is what we're going to stick with for that one.
Okay. And that was, okay, this was the one where you went from the 100 square feet gross, and that made sense, back house, front, and, and so this one seemed to make sense to me. Item number, recommendation number five for seat count. Okay, this one also seemed like reasonable. Six was the waiver, I think we talked about that, that seemed like a reasonable item, at least from my perspective, because of all those items that you mentioned, it's going to come to us if there was some other issue that, that would require it to go before the commission. So those are my notes. Hard to read. Sorry about that. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? I have just a couple of questions. So we obviously just saw the circulation element and talked a little bit about our bike master plan then. We have plans to revisit that as well, right? It needs probably a little more expansion at some point. And that kind of plays into or ties into this discussion as well.
Yes, and actually, there are several circulation element policies that support looking and revisiting at parking requirements and looking at emerging trends in technology. So the circulation element, as may be adopted on the 25th next week, would definitely support these efforts as well.
Okay, great. And then you talked about Phase Two. I have the same concerns that Commissioner Wigan mentioned. Obviously, this is kind of all a balance, and we definitely want to make sure that we are doing what we can to incentivize businesses to come to Newport and be able to have a robust, you know, business activity and presence in the community, but not at the detriment to the neighboring residents. So can you kind of talk a little bit more, expand a little bit more on that Phase Two? Because whatever these requirements are will be citywide, but then if we're looking at secondarily, potentially, these management plans in different areas throughout the city, which I think is great and needs to be done because each area does have different needs, different limitations, what will that look like? I also have the same concern about employee parking and those people in particular parking on a regular basis in the residential neighborhoods, as well as patrons spilling over into those residential areas.
Sure, and that's obviously a very great question. With respect to the current effort, so as you mentioned, this would apply citywide. A couple of things to note, again, that the proposed parking ratio includes the entire space, which includes back-of-house. The same is true for the change to the takeout service limited. And I know the 20 seats, it sounds like a big increase, obviously, from six. One thing to note there, just to get it into perspective, is the building code occupant load of one per 15 would mean that's a 300-square-foot dining space, which isn't really that big. A lot of the current takeout service limited restaurants have at least that, and they actually put more than six seats in there, so it's an enforcement issue. I think in terms of regulating the employee parking appropriately, I'm not trying to defer to the parking management studies, but those will look at the parking supplies that are within each of those areas, study how they're used, and look at potentially changing time durations on public parking spaces in the street, and also may look at employee parking plans. So stepping back, for example, Balboa Village, there is an employee parking permit that was implemented through that plan, and that is something that designates certain employee parking spaces at a very discounted rate. I think it's like $50 for the year, where they can park in certain areas adjacent to Balboa Village. And so that is something that would be looked at more closely for each of those districts. So again, Kornalmar, I know that's a big one. We look more closely at the time limits in each of those residential areas, or look at opportunities for where employees could park and not impact residential neighbors. So I would look to Balboa Village as a very good example as to what could come of Phase Two for each of those potential problematic areas.
Okay, but so that will definitely be part of the scope of work for the consultant in that Phase Two portion of this?
Yes, and they're actually presently working on it. It's just that's a more in-depth study and not something that we are prepared to move forward with right now. It will, it will come back to the commission for consideration again next year.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff from commissioners? Okay, well, this is not a public hearing, but we will take comments from the public at this time.
Madam Chair, I do have a question for the commission. So what I heard so far was that on item number three, that for staff, kind of, it didn't sound like there was a lot of support for that medical dental reduction on the medical office use. It's really to kind of go back and relook at it again. But, but it seemed like there was some conversation with looking at just general office and just looking at our parking ratios for general office. Do I have that about right?
Yeah, it did seem like there was some hesitation to apply the same standard, considering, you know, typically when someone goes to an office to work for the day, you know, it's a very different use than something that's a little more transient in nature, a restaurant, for example. Is that?
I, I agree with that. I think the medical office is a much higher trip use. It's much, it's in and out, it's COVID-proof, everyone's in every day, it's essential. And so I, I just have some, have some concerns about lowering the parking ratio on that specific use, given that it, I feel it's already pretty impacted as it sits today. And I'm thinking of areas like Hoog, areas like up and around there, some of the medical office down here, it's still pretty tight. And then guys that are coming from, you know, for conversions, it's going to open up that more too. And I think we've had a lot of public issues with the conversions because of parking round not being sufficient. So just a little more background on that. And again, I, if this body is, you know, that's what they do for a living, and they try, I'm just saying, can we just maybe hone in more on that, so maybe get some more background to understand why they're recommending that?
You're supportive of potentially a change in this category, but not necessarily the same standard that's being proposed.
Not the same standard as the office, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Secretary Rosin?
I could be wrong, but it seemed to me that this was one of those items where we have examples recently where the parking standard was reviewed by a traffic engineer, one off of Bristol and the other one right across the street. And so, I mean, we have good examples to go off of, but I think it could use some more study, and we could take a look at it, and if that's a reasonable solution. It seems like it was recent, and each time we found the traffic studies supported it, that there were other reasons that there were concerns, like stacked parking or other items like that, so.
Yeah, and I'll just, you know, not all medical offices created equal. There are different, different projects have different medical tenant uses in there, and so they are going to have, so we're trying to blanket it. To his point, he could be accurate on some of them. Again, I just want to, I think we need to dive more into it before we blanket it.
Commissioner Wigan?
And then Commissioner Rosin had brought up on recommendation number one on B, maybe keeping an eye on that one too, that, I'm not sure, Commissioner Rosin, can you go back into that a little bit more in your notes that you, that you had there? But you were, it kind of fell into the category of maybe that spillover into residential. If you're suggesting that employees can go offsite and then come in, has that kind of been what you were kind of hitting on in that, in the staff report? It kind of says, provided in the form of free or employee paid access at offsite facilities located within one-eighth mile of the property. So, you know, can we, could we make that thought, that employees are parking one-eighth to the residential neighborhoods? And nobody knows that they are, but they're getting away with a parking reduction?
Are we talking about item B?
On recommendation one, you said?
On recommendation one, this one is just one of those ones that didn't seem like it made a lot of sense. I mean, I won't, I think that, I don't know how many facilities are out there. I've never worked, I've only worked at one place where there was a shower, and nobody used it. And I was trying to imagine how that could actually work and the types of, how you would get the amenities necessary. I mean, I just don't know how it's translatable unless you have a major construction to make that actually fit. It just doesn't make sense. That was kind of my thought when I was saying that it didn't make sense to me. But I was trying to use a real-world approach, for what it's worth.
Commissioner Harris?
Actually, and sorry, Commissioner Rosin, number two, B, I think, I agree that number one's more applicable to retail, so maybe if you could, you know, maybe we could constrain it to retail. Front curb drop-off, no one's doing that in office buildings, or very rare, maybe if they want to appeal, they could go to the, you know, director.
Does that clarify for you? Okay, back to you, Mr. Mosher.
Thank you, Chair Kleiman. Members of the planning commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. I had two comments. The first one is just very technical on recommendations one and two, where there is offered a credit from the normal parking requirement for providing alternative means of transportation. And they set a maximum possible credit at 5%. I just point out, 5% doesn't sound like a really big number to me. And for a facility that has a modest parking requirement to start with, I'm wondering how we treat the 5%, which is likely to come out a fractional number. Into one way of thinking, you would have to have a parking requirement of at least 20 spaces before you had one full credit that you could take. However, normally in our Title XX zoning, we round numbers up, even if it's a small fraction. So I'm, I'm wondering how those small fractional numbers will be treated, and what's a fair way to do that? That's the first comment. And then the second comment is on recommendation four, where the recommendation is for eating and drinking establishments to go from the current requirement of one space per 40 square feet of net public area to one space per 100 feet of gross floor area plus outdoor dining. I understand what the recommended change is. I couldn't tell from the Nelson Nygaard report or the staff report, how is that in practice going to affect eating and drinking establishments in Newport Beach? For how many of those, is that an increased parking requirement? For how many is that a reduction? I really don't know how gross square feet plus... I, I really don't know how gross square feet plus outdoor dining compares to the net public area with the different ratio. It could come out a higher or lower number to me, and I think we would want to know how it's going to affect, again, in the real world, actual restaurants that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? See, we have some visitors from UCI. Want to get your feet wet with civic engagement? You'll be on Newport Beach TV. Not tonight, okay. Excuse me, bringing back to the commission or staff, did you want to respond to Mr. Mosher's comment?
Sure. On the rounding, that's obviously a very good question, and he's correct that the code talks to rounding up for parking in general. I think that's something that staff would have to study more closely before putting that into an ordinance. So we'd want to look at whether or not that's even applicable for a smaller site.
Thank you.
Chair Climon, if I might add, we did start taking a look at, you know, that real-world effect question, you know, how does, we took a look at a couple of restaurants in town and said, well, what's the gross floor area and how many parking spaces required? You know, what was required based upon the existing scheme? And the numbers are actually very close, very similar. You know, in some cases, there's going to be a higher parking requirement. In some cases, there'll be a slightly lower parking requirement. And that would help them facilitate some of those restaurants that have, you know, these COVID patios that now want to make them permanent. Well, they won't be permanent in design, we're going to make sure they're really nice, but, but the point is, is that that will help facilitate some of those patios becoming permanent. So we do anticipate a, a small reduction in required parking for some of these larger restaurants based on that theme. But, but all in all, each, each restaurant is different, and I think it would be almost impossible for us to go in and look at the effect of this on every restaurant in town, because we have, I don't know, several hundred of them. But all in all, it's very, very similar.
Okay, thank you. Any other final words from the commission? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your comments and participation. We'll move on to our next item, new business, item number five, municipal code and city council policy review, PA 2022-0219. So for this, we need to go ahead and take a motion to create the ad hoc committee, correct?
That's, that's correct, Madam Chair. The, the, actually, the rules of procedure delegate the authority to appoint the positions to the chair. So with that, we can just go ahead and make a motion to form the committee and then leave that to your authority.
So the motion to form the committee and then subsequently appointing the members of that committee? Or do them together?
It's within your discretion to appoint the body, the members of that committee.
Okay, great. I will, I will go ahead and make a motion to appoint Commissioners Harris, Rosin, and Klostermeier to this ad hoc committee. Do I have a second?
All second.
Call for the vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to item number six, code update related to fractional home ownership, PA 2022-0202. Same process here. We are creating the ad hoc committee that was discussed at our last Planning Commission hearing. I will go ahead and make the motion to create this ad hoc committee, appointing Commissioners Rosin, Wiegand, and Lowry. Do I have a second?
All second.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you to all the commissioners dedicating additional time to these committees. We appreciate it. Are we taking public comment on these?
You know, people are entitled to comment on matters. If there's anything specific that you would want to add to it, we could certainly consider it at this point.
Thank you. Yeah, Chair Climon, I remind you, there is a Brown Act requirement, not only to allow public comment on hearing items, there actually is a requirement, to allow public comment on any agenda item. And so here you are, appointing a committee to look into the issue of fractional ownership, and I just wanted to reiterate the comment that I made at your last meeting, which I do not believe that the appointment of this committee is what you were directed by the city council to do. I, I appreciate the chair looked at the video of the September 27 council meeting. I think you had to look at that and the September 13 meeting and the public comments, and all of that in totality and context to understand what the city council asked you, the Planning Commission, to do. It seemed clear to me that there was a clear direction from that, and that was that we currently have a definition in our code of something called a timeshare project. And they asked the Planning Commission, timeshare projects are currently allowed only in commercial and mixed-use areas. They're not allowed in residential areas. They are prohibited because they are not listed as an allowed use. The direction was to study and correct that definition of timeshare project so that it would include a fractional ownership sold to a group of strangers under a contract that would make it effectively a timeshare, but to be careful to exclude a home that was shared by relatives or friends. And your community development director promised that he could bring it to you at your October 6 meeting for study, and at this meeting, he could bring forth an ordinance that would accomplish that change to the definition, and it would go back to the city council in November. That is what the video shows. That was the promise that was made. That is what the people who spoke at that meeting expected. And since you're forming the committee, and I don't know how people communicate with the committee, you've done it. I don't think it's the right thing to do. One of the things that was presented at your last meeting was in our one areas to consider a 500-foot separation. I would point out, that's a terrible idea. People who take advantage of this are going to sell their house, leave Newport Beach, get a premium price for that, they're going to devalue the two houses next to them. Those people, because of the 500-foot separation, will never have an opportunity to buy into the same thing and get the same advantage that person did. It's really a bad idea, and I think you should be doing what the council directed you to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Mosher. Staff, did you want to respond to that? Obviously, you are involved more intimately with both council and Planning Commission. And did you want to just speak to what your understanding of?
I do want to be careful going too deep, because this item is just simply to form the committee, and so we certainly will be revisiting all of these issues as, as they, as they come forward and move along.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will move on to item number seven. Any motions for reconsideration this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number eight, our report by the community development director, or request for matters which a planning commissioner would like placed on a future agenda.
Certainly, Chair Climon, I'll provide the director's report today. So our next meeting is on October 20th. I'm sorry, that's today. November 3rd. We have two items on the agenda here, you know, a small restaurant on the peninsula and a variance for our new home. So that's a fairly light agenda, but those two items there. For the city council coming up next week, we've got our circulation element update that'll be going forward, obviously the commission participated in that. We've got a public hearing on the Leder House hotel expansion, which you did see that as well. We also have a public hearing on the tennis club at Newport Beach. You may have heard that the city council did not approve that and remanded it back to the commission. Well, they reconsidered that action and put it back on this agenda, so they're going to be reconsidering that project at their next meeting. So I just want to keep you informed there. Let's see, the other item I wanted to inform you of is, you know, we have our general plan update process that's ongoing. We have a steering committee that's made up of three citizens chaired by Nancy Gardner, and that steering committee is involved with the, selecting folks for a general plan advisory committee. And so they've reviewed applications, there'll be 30 members of the public on that committee. They'll be forwarding a recommendation on to the city council in November for appointment to that committee. We anticipate that committee starting up, work, doing some of the work in January, working on some of the land use element and the zoning amendments that will be coming forward to implement the housing element. But they're also going to be tackling and advising staff and being a body for public outreach and discussion for the comprehensive update. So we'll be looking at the entire general plan from, from, you know, revisiting other policies of the land use element, harbor and bay element, recreation element, noise element, safety element, that's going to be a big one. But that committee's going to start up in 2023 and be working for possibly a year or two until we get that update ready for public hearings. So I want you to know that we're getting that process up and running, so. And that's my report tonight.
Thank you. Any members from the public that would like to comment on this item? Hearing none, we will move on to item number nine, requests for excused absences. Commissioner Wiegand.
On, it looks like our committee meeting on December 8th, fractional homeownership code amendment, so that, is that relative to the ad hoc to have completed their, completed their meeting, or their hearings, or their study on the issue, and then for us to make that determination to send it to council?
It is a tentative schedule, so, you know, we're setting goals for ourselves, so that's, it's on the, the agenda for tentative.
Got it.
Hearing no requests for excused absences, we are adjourned.